Hi.
Hi, entertain a motion to acknowledge the fire department's report from May 2016.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, announcements, Mr. Wallenin, district aide to Senator Ann Goby will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 to 3:00 PM tomorrow, June 22nd, all are welcome. Brookfield's summer concerts on the Common Series will kick off on Friday, July 8th, 5:30 PM, Henry and the Juggler, Henry the Juggler will perform followed by a concert with crowd favorites David Pike and the Good Old Boys from six, at 6:30. Area cooks and budding bakers of all ages are invited to compete for cash prizes in a cookie baking contest which will precede the concert. Local Public Access Committee is seeking members, the committee is also seeking videographers to take meetings and local events. Those interested should contact Ms. Mahoney at Local Access Brookfield MA at BrookfieldMA.us. And I would personally like to thank both Ms. Mahoney and her husband for attending a lot of these functions that I'm personally going to when I see them there and unfortunately I don't get to watch as much TV as I'd like, so I'm assuming they're on TV.
They are.
They are.
And I, they did a nice job down where we had the memorials, I saw that the other day, did a nice job.
But they're, they're there.
I know they're there.
Uh, any other announcements? Hearing none, anybody wish to address the board this evening? Mr. Holcraft, welcome.
Evening.
Good evening.
You're sitting in a good chair tonight.
Oh, good.
What do you find out on the snowplow practice with the windflower?
Well, uh, we've operated in this mode for six years, not had a malfunction. The cost of the town was a headlight and just care and operation.
Care and operation?
As far as, just to take care in the operation of that particular truck and those particular situations.
So then you found with the windflower in small world?
That is the highway superintendent's prerogative.
Okay. I don't think that's good. What about the practice of all the equipment leaving a site away from the highway bond and then coming back before a fifteen, twenty minute break in that hall and everything back again and then an hour and a half later bringing it all back again with all the crew and all the men?
Well, I mean-
At lunch and then going back again and then coming back again early?
Another alternative would be to buy a porta potty. Is the advisory board recommending a porta potty?
It's the first I've heard.
Would that be a good, would that be a good idea?
Well, it, it would pay for itself in no time.
Well, here's, here's the other part to that, other than talking about restrooms for the evening, um, that the contract that we prefer to use charges us the $850 a day. You have about six and a half hours of active or efficient activity. That guy comes with mats, something that the other contractors don't, and they provide assistance to us as far as that work. So you're paying eight hundred and fifty dollars a day for that particular individual. Should we hire Northern or others, you're paying fifteen hundred bucks a day, comes with an operator and then basically the operator stays in the bucket truck. So for my, uh, being cost effective in the removal of trees, the, uh, the guy that we prefer to use would be, uh, who we are using and it costs us the eight hundred and fifty bucks a day plus the, with, including additional services.
Well, I got a guy that will come into the town for five thousand a day. We're gonna compare that to the eight, through what we're paying?
No, no, I would, I would-
You mean, how many five thousand are you-
Oh, yeah, I mean, he's comparing it to, to high priced people. No, we got a guy that's doing it for eight fifty.
Eight fifty?
There's other people who come in for the same price, my, my-
Well, then I, then I suggest that you offer that to the highway superintendent of who you-
Well, Dave, in, in regards to that, Dave, we're, we're gonna talk about it tonight, we're gonna ask your committee to, um, approve our reserve transfer request. I spent a good part of the day getting quotes and Mr. Stendrop working on quotes for the, for the beach.
Yep.
Uh, we got a quote back from a pretty reputable guy, he actually does my work for twenty-two hundred dollars to twenty-four hundred dollars, a full day with four guys versus, versus, versus about a fourteen hundred dollar bill with two guys at ten and a half on a Saturday, plus Mr. Sierra. So, you know, you're just saving the town a thousand dollars, so.
Well, we're gonna compare apples to apples, you can't compare a high priced, high price to somewhere that could do a cheap one.
This, this, this is a guy that does my work.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm not paying Cadillac prices, trust me.
No, and it-
We've gotta get that work done over there on some farm.
But I'm just, I'm throwing that out as a reference, you know, with, with-
Right, right, right.
I just compared apples to apples.
We use who we use. It's been cost effective. You're complaining about a particular day that you saw people carting one to the-
It's not, it's not one particular day, it's a normal, general practice of what we do in this town.
So you're sug-
And it's costing thousands and thousands of dollars, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, then that's your opinion.
It's not an opinion, it's a fact of what is taking place in our town. It's a practice. And what I'm saying to you is that, is that a good practice for us to be doing it that way? We got a guy with a tree company, he comes in, he gets paid from seven, he doesn't, he's sitting down at the highway bond sometimes at quarter to eight, we pay him for his lunch and then we, he's, I see him, I see him out warming for crying out loud at, at quarter to three and he's getting paid to three. And that's always one day, it's, I, I know what's going on. So you take all these, all this time added up, it's thousands of dollars. And then you guys are worrying about hooking up a pipe to a kitchen sink in there because it's gonna cost too much and we're, when we're wasting thousands on the other end for something else.
Again, I would turn to the chair and I would suggest that that's an opinion and I am entitled to mine. And I would only say, the only other thought that I would have is that if you've, if you have witnessed this, to then provide a document to the chair that we should be, uh-
Well, I'm bringing it right here in the public, I mean, how much, you think I'm gonna sit here and make up stories? Anyone that knows me, Clarence, would tell you that I tell exactly what goes on, right to a team.
I'm, I'm looking forward to exactly what goes on here in a few-
And I just told you.
And I said you're entitled to your opinion.
It's not an opinion, it's a matter of fact.
Well, I've got some facts here too, that you'll suggest are my opinions.
The facts are, Clarence, the facts are is they do go back to the highway barn for coffee, they do go back for lunch.
And restroom and, yeah, exactly.
I, I don't think they take every piece of equipment with them, I think they'll get into one truck and go back up.
That's not what I, that's not what I have observed on numerous occasions.
I've, I've, I've worked in the town for the past week and they've actually been helping me, um, down in Lewis Field and it, they came down, they were mowing Lewis Field and they came down in one truck and they left in one truck and left everything there, so they didn't load everything up and go back.
That's different, that's, that's probably two guys cutting the field down there.
It's the same, it's the same-
That's different than what I'm saying.
Not really.
They have a work ethic.
I'm just, I'm just saying, just trying to be more cost effective because in the course of the year, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars.
When, when you're referring to the tree itself, the tree issues, the town saving money, doing what we're doing.
Yeah, but we could, yeah, but we could be doing more because we got a good guy that supposedly had a good price.
Yep.
But yet we're still, we're still wasting, we're still, we're getting five, five and a half hours out of it and was paying for eight. You're missing the whole point here, Clarence.
Okay, you're saying that we get five or five and a half, I'm suggesting you get six and a half hours of active or efficient work. We're off by an hour, a hundred bucks for each day that he's doing it.
No, that's, your math is wrong, your math is-
I don't, I don't see tens of thousands here.
I do, your math is off.
You're entitled to your opinion.
It's not opinion, it's a fact, so I'm gonna break it down for you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, next, next issue, sir?
Yes, when you do chapter ninety-one, if you can, before you do anything out of chapter ninety-one, if you can bring it to the finance board, let us know what is gonna be dispensed out of it and what it's for. Do you want us to get on board with this capital, uh, capital?
Get on board, I got scolded again for the third time, so as far, as far as I'm concerned, I'm done with it.
Okay, but I'm just saying, you want us to get on board with it and we have been doing some of it, but yet when we do, when you spend chapter ninety-one, we don't know what is being spent.
So can you make note anytime that we have a discussion with chapter ninety, it gets forwarded over the advisory committee?
And the next thing I'm, I'm talking about chapter ninety is I, what I picked up at the annual town meeting is we're gonna be getting maybe another payload to replace another one?
He's thinking about it.
Trying to work towards that.
Yeah, he's trying to work.
That's my point, so do, do we, do we, do we need another payload even though we've had, we have two?
Well, one of those is gonna be out of commission.
One's getting scrapped.
And that's why he didn't, that's why he backed over that article.
And I know we have two payloads and a backhoe and we have another contractor that's gonna fuck it too. What I'm saying to you is do we need to get one now?
Well, that, and, and I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be offensive to you personally or the-
You're not gonna offend, you can't offend.
To the advisory committee as a whole, but what gets spent out of chapter ninety money is between the board of selectmen and the highway department.
That's right.
Me personally, I'm not running back to the advisory committee to see if we can spend chapter ninety money.
We want to oversee the finances, that's what we charge.
You can, you can be advised of it.
Right, that's my point.
But I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking-
I'm not trying to, the, the board's not gonna tell you what to do, but we wanna go over it-
But I'm just telling you-
And make recommendations, and that's what we charge you with, correct?
Not on chapter ninety money, no.
Well, it, it's money in the town. It's money in the town.
I would like to expand this conversation about money into the town.
Okay.
Quite honestly, if you, if you-
In what aspect?
Well, I, I was told that a study was done, so I did my own study with respect to the highway department and grants that the town has received. And so I put a little report together and I have a copy for the chairman of the advisory committee, 'cause I heard that they did a report. And so I just wanna kinda give you a flavor. So, this is the highway department and we're talking about chapter ninety, so some of that's in this as well, but this is the, since Cindy came on board in 2003, the upper chart is the millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars that you received on a yearly basis from those grants that she administered. What you see in the little brown line in the top chart, and I've expanded down to the chart below, is that these grants allow the town eight to 10% from management. And so rather than taking each grant and deciding how much administrative cost we were allowed, I just took the bottom number of eight percent to just calculate that. So what you see is the administrative dollars. So at the, the bottom chart is eight percent of the, the top numbers. What you see in the black line is the average through those years of what came to the town for useful dollars, so again, ta- taking out the high years and the low years, just what, what's the average of that to the town? The town would, received back in 2003 roughly twenty thousand dollars for administration of the grants that Cindy was administering. You did not pay Cindy that, you paid her that brown line at the very bottom and what her salary has been through partial year of 2016, suggesting to me that we've been paying Cindy, I mean, the town has not been paying Cindy, the grants have been paying Cindy since she began her work and additional other resources of the town. So David, my question to you is the study that you did that suggested that we not expand the highway administrator by four hours a week, which would've cost the town three thousand dollars in this coming year, was suggested that that was a bad idea. We now have two contracts, we had a contract that we fought for three years to get paid and we lost those, that income and, and quite honestly, I believe that Cindy could've worked, possibly had she had some more hours, to be a bit more tenacious in gathering that money. I look at now the correspondence that we now have on Mill Street that says that we missed out on the opportunity to get the building through this June. It will be later in next year, so we've lost another opportunity where we could have, had we been able to administer a bit better or had additional time to administer, that we might have those funds in our pocket a little quicker than we would've had otherwise.
I think we had discussions on both of those and it wasn't worth the time because it wasn't gonna be potentially plausible to get them.
We eventually got the sixty thousand, that's-
But Cindy has a pretty good radar and she's not gonna waste her time on things that-
On, on, on future grants, what I'm talking about, these are the grants you've got. And, and all I'm saying is-
There's no, there's nobody in this room, and Dave's not gonna even argue with that Cindy works her butt off for this town.
She does, she goes above and beyond.
And, and so what I was told, and I was told that a study was done by the advisory board that suggested that those four extra hours per week was a bad idea. What I'm asking the chairman of the advisory committee for is a copy of that report, because I'd like to understand the basis by which we did not approve those four hours.
Okay.
What we've also said was that this summer, we should have the highway department take a break because of the work that they did over the last two, last summer, which they are doing, vacation times are being taken, good idea to get that, go, get those off the books and we'll move on. But I'm suggesting as we move into another great grant cycle, and I'm looking at complete streets as the example Mass Works Grants, if I look at this blue up here at the top and I see hundreds of thousands of dollars coming into the town, that went into our roads. And we have the roads that we have because of what we see here and that we would want to expand that, I would think, rather than pulling back away from it. So, again, I just look forward to your report.
Okay. But, but there has to be a limit of how much is how much. We used to have a grant, right? The issue's, the issue here is not how much time-
Wait, so, so to start you there, we do, we've had the discussion with Cindy, Cindy always has the availability to go to Mr. Scanlon and we also gave her hours from our administrative assistant, which it is what it is down there.
Yep.
She's using it to the best of her ability.
Yep.
So, so if you can just provide him with that and we can have a future discussion once he mows all of that. Any other issues?
No, I'm just wanting, I'm just saying, saying-
Whoa, 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 we have another issue.
What's the other issue?
David has received correspondence about his driveway. He has a permit in his hand that's signed.
And you're pointing to that?
I just wanna make sure that everybody on the news, we didn't have to have phone calls or anything else?
Oh, we had phone calls.
We had phone calls, we had, we shouldn't have had it.
Additional, additional.
We shouldn't have come, we shouldn't have, I shouldn't have had to come before the town even discussed the situation.
All I'm saying is, I think-
In my right.
Good things have come.
Yeah, but, but the point I'm making is I shouldn't have had to have come here to even discuss an issue of a driveway.
Well, maybe-
Any other issues, Mr. Holcraft?
Yeah, no, sorry.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening?
Oh, yeah, I got one more.
What's that?
Yeah, I got one too.
I don't know if you're still gonna move on putting that restroom in this room?
Are we gonna move?
Are you gonna move forward in doing it?
Yeah.
Have you talked to Mass Historical yet? See if we have to get special permission to change the building in here?
That's the first I've heard of it.
I'd look forward to chatting with those folks, they're on a first name basis. Would you like me to talk to them?
Oh, I don't know if, if, if we're clear to, to put it in here.
I would think.
So that's a curve ball to me, sir, can you have that conversation?
I would definitely.
Because I have, I had a meeting with a plumber, I, I don't know what happened to him.
I don't know how this got onto my plates so quick, but that's kinda fun.
But, but, yeah, okay, but I don't know why, but if you, if you don't mind?
No.
But I have the plumber in Tantascor.
What, what they, what they will do is they will worry about the outside.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say, it's the outside that they worry about.
We tried to do something with the old accountant's office in there and there was, there was a lot of crap-
Because of the window.
That we couldn't do it.
But again, taught, you said talk, so.
It's, it's like the structural, that they really don't want you to hurt the structural.
The facility, yeah.
Right, but just gonna make sure we touch base, that's all, make sure if we're gonna do it, we can do it.
I care as with them, insides inside them.
If you can just confirm that, though.
Yeah, just confirm before we start carrying and adding stuff to the table.
Thanks, thank you. Mr. Eaton? Both you gentlemen? Well, did you have a, you guys are on the agenda, did you have?
Yes, yes.
You don't want public access?
I'm sorry?
You don't wanna discuss anything during public access?
No.
Anybody else wish to talk in regards to public access? Hearing none. Item number one, water commissioners' discussion, welcome gentlemen. The floor is yours.
Just some talking points. Basically, the reason why we wanted to come before you tonight is to talk about the fact that a water superintendent will be leaking. We have a date of December 31st and so in realizing that that is ahead of us, we have some work to do as far as acquisition descriptions and determination on, on what we need to do. As you'll see, the very first line there is what is the water commissioner's authority in hiring the new superintendent? I look at the town bylaws and I don't see anything in the town bylaws in reference to the water commissioners. But under the water superintendent heading under the bylaws, it says that the superintendent is hired by the water commissioners. And I, I guess what I'm asking is, does that need legal review by town council so that we know what, what our authority is?
Well, if I remember correctly, when Mr., uh, when Bruce was hired, it was done by the water commissioners. And they didn't go before the selectmen, it was, because like you, you almost run like as a separate entity. So would, I don't, I, I mean, I don't think personally that you would have to go before the town council.
You, you would not have?
No, I don't think you would, but I mean, if the other two members think-
Can we, can we, can we have the wage?
Well, the wage, I, the way I-
So, so to nip all this conversation in the bud, the whatevs could've been, I'm gonna entertain a motion to allow the, um, water commissioners to contact legal counsel in regards to the hiring process.
Just to verify, sure.
Sure, okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So, um, as far as the wage, my understanding is that the water commissioners work with the personnel board to establish that, that wage.
So if a wage authorization comes, the, the board has to sign that too?
Yeah, we have.
Well, we would go back to personnel, we'd work with them.
It goes back to personnel, yeah.
So we will work with them and then it will be forwarded for review and approval. So I, I guess, under, yeah, I think this is critical. Right. So if you drop down to the next subject heading is what is the new waters superintendent going to look like? I guess the big question is what is happening with DPW? And is that something that obviously is gonna affect our, our process and who this superintendent works for? So I guess we're asking for some guidance as to what might be-
So this, this board really hasn't discussed moving forward with the DPW? Knee jerk, do we want to?
I don't think so, because I had talked to town council quite a bit on it and she says, really, in the small communities, it's not really a good idea to go ahead with a DPW.
So then what authority do you guys have to hire with a job description of what Mr. Clark actually does, i.e. water department, highway?
Well, I know-
Well, that's, that's part of the question, is this going to be, are we expecting to get another Bruce Clark that will work with the highway for, and, and the water department for forty hours a week, or is it something that would be just a water superintendent position?
But that leaves us in a position that Bruce obviously does help the highway department.
He absolutely does, without question.
And nobody will question that.
Well, I know when we did the job descriptions and Mary Lou could probably back, when we had gone over Bruce's, remember we had put in it someone that would work with the highway department and that they would have all these different licenses that they need.
That's, that's Bruce's job description?
That's Bruce's, but we said, but we said we would also put in it, you know, that they could prob, you know, if they would be in agreement to work with the highway department, if I remember correctly.
I, I wouldn't like you to ask that question to council, if that's legal, if we can-
Yeah, I know.
Because technically the board of selectmen oversees the highway department and you guys oversee the water department. So it's kind of a mixing of two different entities.
That's another good question. I mean, that's why we're here, is figure out, um, you know, to ask these questions so we can, we can stop the process. And I know it seems like it's a long way out.
But that's my question and that's why I asked Karen, he hasn't even really legally submitted-
Correct.
-a retirement.
Correct.
So when I see an August, um, application, is, is that premature?
Well, again, this is very preliminary. This is something that, that I put together the, last night to present to the commissioners when we have our next meeting. But this is basically a kind of a fact finding-
My, my only recommendation, if you're looking to hire mid-November, obviously for training purposes or whatnot, a lot can happen from August to November. Someone say they'll take the job and then something else happens and-
And, and so, I mean, this is giving you kind of a-
Yeah.
It's a timeline.
Yeah, it's a timeline.
But that, when I see that, that's the only thing that stick, the two things that stick out to me is, is the highway slash water department-
Yep.
And then the, the date for advertising. I would recommend pushing it farther.
And, and we may well do that, this is strictly a talking point. Do we wanna talk about what the other options would be if, if it's not a position similar to what Bruce does now with the highway?
Well, that's where I was going, if you guys just hired a twenty hour a week or whatever it is, we'd probably have to pick up another highway employee.
Right.
And then there is the possibility of outsourcing to a private company.
I'm not gonna micromanage that department, that's, that's up to you, John.
It's nothing to do with you.
But, yeah, I'm glad you didn't lose sight of the fact that he's a huge part of the highway department.
Absolutely. I mean, the work that the highway department did last summer on the police station-
You see him all over town, you don't even have to say anything, you'll see him excavating down whatever road and down, uh-
Absolutely, yep.
And I think he's been, he helps out even repairing the equipment down there too at the highway, he's been a big part of the town for many years.
And the beauty is it's, it's on the budget of the water department.
Yep. It's the thing, I don't think we'll find somebody that'll, can really replace Bruce.
Well, that's, that's our mission.
I, I understand that, but yeah.
Seven day, week job.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Well, that's, that's probably the biggest nut, is that we really need the coverage of two people because it's really not fair to be seven twenty-four, three sixty-five.
Now, is the secondary op, operator, is he gonna stay on or are you gonna have to find another one?
That's something that we'll have to be determined.
That's another thing too, yeah.
But as you'll see, when I have alternates listed, I think we're gonna need probably two alternates. Again, you can't expect a new superintendent to work every weekend like Bruce does.
Yeah, I know, I see Bruce go by all the time, comes right by my house, yeah.
Any information that you, guidance that you wanna provide to us is, you know, would be helpful and we just wanted to sit down and give you what, what we see is coming up. Obviously, those dates are not cast in stone. It's just kinda say, it'll be here before we know it.
Yeah.
Fortunately, yeah.
From a purely accounting perspective, we are underestimating the highway expenses and overestimating the water department expenses. It's been going on, I know, I know it's beneficial to the town, but is it correct accounting?
I think the accounting is correct.
But we're charging the water department for ten, fifteen hours a week, twenty hours a week that is actually being spent on the highway department.
Well, it can be justified that the highway department's out there working for the water department, laying pipe or digging roads or-
Right, but I, I don't think it's quite even. Just accounting.
And they adjust it so we can get our superintendent.
And, and to be honest with you, the retirement was really the only reason why the DPW conversation came up.
Yeah.
To handle that accounting issue, so it's all under one roof. So if you guys wanna have a conversation with Copeland Page and think we can get a DPW and if it'll work better, you guys have a good handle on the highway department and the water department.
From what I've seen on the laws, or the state regulations for establishing a DPW, I don't even think we can get there.
Oh, it's, it's hard, yeah.
No, no, because you have to, you have to like vote it in at a town meeting and you have to go to an annual and-
There's a lot of authority that goes with that position.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it, it would consume any number of water commissioners, cemetery, highway-
Recreation, we're taking everything, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, award the CDBG consultant contract for the senior center planning project. Um, there has been a study and it was an advantageous proposal from two, 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 where are we? Catlin and Petrick Architect PC for the sum of thirty-seven thousand dollars and that will be coming from the fiscal twenty-fifteen community block development grant. I will entertain a motion to allow the chair to sign.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, municipal transfers. I will entertain a motion to transfer from the reserve fund to the well test expense account for the amount of eight hundred and fifteen dollars and this has been approved by the advisory committee already. Cost is over and above what the contracted price was, the extras for sampling.
Yeah, who, who is this from?
Mike Siri.
Oh, it's from Mike.
Border Health.
Oh, oh, it's from the Border Health.
So entertain said motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion from the cemetery commission for the amount of eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty cents. Uh, transfer from the perpetual-
Perpetual care?
No, animal control expense, that was my fault.
Yes.
Bad, bad penmanship on someone's part. Animal control expense to the cemetery payroll, after last transfer, there was eight hundred fifty-one, twenty, fifty-two remaining. So cover one pay period which ends June sixteen.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
This has not been before the advisory committee yet. Uh, the highway department is requesting a transfer of two thousand dollars from the highway seasonal worker account to the highway overtime other account. Um, their, their, um, reason for transfer is stating that the highway department was mowing. Um, I think that is just one bullet of that. We have, uh, overtime hours for Weber Road and other projects, so there is overtime, it's more than just mowing issues. Mowing comes about five hundred dollars. So I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
I'll take those two. Can you put down advisory committees tonight or maybe with the day of tonight?
What was the, what was the amount on the, um, the other one on the Border Health?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen.
No, I have that one, wasn't there another one?
Cemetery was eight sixty-five twenty. While we're on transfers, I would like to entertain a motion, we don't have the slip here, but if we have the motion, we can sign it. To transfer the amount of fourteen hundred dollars to the, uh, what are we calling it, not the shade tree, but the tree warden expense, or we could just put it to the highway? Highway expense?
Yep, highway.
Uh, from the reserve fund to the highway, highway department expense? The amount of fourteen hundred dollars for the purpose of, um, removing the trees at the beach.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Have a second?
Yes, sure.
Any discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so if you heard through public access, we got the bid of two thousand to twenty-two hundred today. Doing the math, it's about fourteen hundred for, uh, a Saturday, two guys going down there and with Mr. Siri. Um, can you get that drawn up so we can get that to advisory committee as well? Uh, item number four, vacation carryovers. Cindy's requesting a carryover of thirty-six hours, I will entertain said motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Chief Martello is requesting five vacation days to be transferred over for the first quarter of FY seventeen, entertain said motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, town accountant applications, the deadline was up, we received three applications. Um, one I don't think is even worth entertaining, someone from Wisconsin. Other two are from Natick and Westboro. It's tough, none of them have municipal experience, but they do have accounting experience. We either have the option of requesting an interview with both individuals and making a determination or going out to bid again, putting out advertisement again.
I'd go out again.
I think I would go out again because like one of them, when I had looked it over, one of them's got a full-time job, so why would he be here?
We are requesting a part-time position, so-
I understand that, but I mean, the thing is, I mean-
So I'm going to entertain a motion to go out to bid again.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Joan did say the only one worth pursuing might be the third, the, um, the woman.
So if you can just request, if you can reach out to her, state that we are going out again due to inadequate-
And, um, if I could bring up-
Applications and she wants to apply again.
I think we should, I don't know how the other two board members feel, but I think we should extend it to twenty hours and I think that we should probably offer some benefits with it and I think by that we might get more people to respond.
What's it advertise at now?
Fifteen to twenty.
You put in there no benefits?
No, but we put fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty, by, by law, if they know municipal finance, that twenty piece does get benefits, so I, I don't think we have to muddy it down.
But I think we might just have to, you know, offer somebody benefits in order to getting, you know, a good person here for the job.
Not opposed to it, if it comes with that twenty hour piece. But I think we have a motion on the floor, I don't think we took a vote.
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
I say advertise.
So we'll advertise again. Uh, appointments. I'm going to put that to the side, we can do that at your own time, so that's-
Thank you.
All right. Um, the accountant, we've already, we didn't hire with an expiration, did we? It was just a-
She's just here on interim, till we find somebody.
Reappoint that. Um, entertain a motion to appoint for a three-year term, Mr. Falter, to the advisory committee.
Um, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Cofflin for a three-year term.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Nope.
There's no second. Entertain a motion to appoint, uh, to the agricultural commission for a three-year term, Mr. Dolan.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, three-year term to Mr. Starcher.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Having none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ag com alternate for one year, Mr. Grimes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion? Can I just take out discussion from all this? We're not going to discuss, you guys can just jump in if you want to.
Good guys.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, one-year term, Mr. Cleveland?
I'll make the motion.
Yep, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Havlin?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Ladue?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
My friend Dr. Ladue, he's our expert.
Yeah, good guy.
Yes, he is.
Uh, three-year term, animal control officer, Ms. Purdue.
I'll make the mo-
If I mispronounce that, I apologize.
Yeah, that's a Purdue, I'll make the motion.
Second.
And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Banister Common and Mall for three years, uh, Ms., help me, Schlis, Slick? Monica Schlick?
Monica Schlick.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Lidle, three-year term?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Biolo Committee, one-year term, Mr. Cook?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discuss, all in favor?
Aye.
Violating my own recommendation?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Holcraft?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Grabowski?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Barnes?
Make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Did we want discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, one year, Mr. Urkel is an alternate.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One-year term for the CDBG advisory committee, Ms. Lincoln?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Clark?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Roberts?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Snite?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Conservation Commission for three years, Mr. O'Leary?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Cleveland?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Simon?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Constable, one year, Mr. Tetro?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Counsel on Aging, three years, Ms. Roberts?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. LeBlanc?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Canty?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three-year cultural council, Ms. Siri?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, election workers, one year, Ms. Kay?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. LaPierre?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Lazil? Lazili, I'm sorry.
Lazily?
Lazily.
Lazily.
Even worse, thanks. Made my face redder.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Ms. Latour is a warden?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Murray?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Myers?
She's not here anymore.
Take that off, I won't entertain the motion.
That came from Mike, oh, she's, she's been gone now.
Ms. Simpson?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Woodward?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Brown?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Renaud?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Help me with this one, Pizarzak?
Yes, Pizarzak.
I nailed it, yay.
I forgot, I should have brought my book. I'll make the motion, could you?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, yeah, I've got the old books, so.
Yeah, the ones that are up this year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, three-year emergency medical squad chief, Ms. LaFleur?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, three-year emergency medical squad officers, Mr. Martell as captain?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Graves as lieutenant?
I'll make the motion.
Aye, oh, a second, second.
All in favor?
There we go.
Aye.
Aye. Emergency medical squad, I don't see any issues on this, so I'm going to take a group roster.
Yeah.
Anderson, Martell, Driscoll, Marx, Rosario, Phillips, McCloud, Roderick, Glennon, help me, Rinaloni?
Well.
Raymond. Uh, Anderson, Connor, Gadbois, Graves, LaFleur, Martell, Lovely, Stur, Strew, Strew?
Sture, Sture.
Sture.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, fire chief and forest fire warden, Mr. Martell for three years?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Firefighter officers, three-year terms, assistant chief, Mr. Chafee?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As Captain, Mr. Martel?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As Captain, Mr. Carmen?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As Lieutenant, Mr. McLude?
McCloud.
McCloud.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As Lieutenant, Mr. Phillips?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Firefighters, I have Mr. Buttnick, Ms. LaFleur, Mr. Chafee, Ms. McCloud, Mr. Comptoir, Mr. Graves, Mr. Roderick, Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Merlow, Mr. Connor, Mr. Esser, Mr. White, Mr. Sture?
Sture.
Sture, Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Edbert, Fimean?
Different lot, different names.
How you pronounce it, Ranol?
Ranol.
Ranaloni, I'm going to go with that, Marx?
Yeah.
Forty-year, Phillips, Hawes, Stanley.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Historical Commission, three years, Mr. Moore?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Metz?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Historical Public Records Committee for one-year term, Mr. Siri?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Medaville?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Insurance Advisory Committee for one year, as a retiree, Ms. Clancy?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Teachers rep, Ms. Gillen, Gillian?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Police Union, Ms. Sergeant Pariso?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Town Hall Staff, Ms. Chisholm?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one right here, I guess it's still half-year, if he wants to retire, he can resign from it. So I'll entertain a motion for the Water Department for Mr. Clark?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Cross the bridge when we get to it, right?
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
From the Highway Department, Mr. Herbert?
I'll make it, and I should be on there too, for the retirees here in the town hall. Mrs. Clancy is the retiree rep from the school.
All right, so let's entertain Mr. Herbert first.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
So we have the motion, second, all in favor?
Second, yep.
All right.
Yep, those in favor, all right.
That was a vote. Ms. Lincoln as a retiree for a town hall?
I'll make the motion.
All right, I can do that for you.
Yeah, you can do it.
And there we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Local Public Access Committee for three years, Ms. Mahoney?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Overseers Board of Dispatch, one-year term, Sergeant Pariso?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Parking Cleric Hearing Officer, one year, Mr. Siri?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Police Chief for one year, due to the town meeting, Mr. I Chief Blanchard?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Police Patrol Officers, full-time, Sergeant Pariso, Patrolman Marino, Officer Cowden, and Officer Murphy.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Police Reserve Officer, Ms. Allen, and Mr. Keep?
I'll make the motion.
Actually, we got more.
Don't keep going.
Pianca Bishop Dodge?
No, no Bishop.
No Bishop, remove Bishop. Thank you, Chief.
Bravo.
Dodge, Jouse Johnson, Trethaway, and is Mr. Dugan the new one?
Correct.
Would, is Mr. Dugan in attendance?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce him before we?
Absolutely.
So the chief had requested in addition, again, we've had this constant conversation that doesn't cost the town money.
Welcome.
Welcome, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir.
This is just kind of a preemptive strike, I have a good possibility of losing two reserve officers to the, to town south, which they might be coming full-time, at least definitely, most likely won. So Herb has over nine years of experience in law enforcement in the surrounding towns such as Brookfield, he's worked in the town of Holland, he's been a firefighter in the past for the town of Leicester, he's been a dispatcher for the town of Leicester, as well as a lead dispatcher for the town of Paxton. So he's going to fit right in, he knows the town, he knows the community, he's responded to calls before in this town. So it's going to take no time at all to get him up and trained, I'm thinking maybe a week and two tops, and he'll be able to fill right in and kind of take the runt of losing one of the full, one of the part-timers, that does work a lot.
Speak, speaking of loss, I, my heart goes out to you in deep regret for your hometown loss.
Yeah.
Officer Tarantino.
So I'd like to introduce Herb Dugan, he's got a very good community-oriented policing, and I think he's going to fit right in.
Is that a promise?
Yeah.
It's, it's on tape, so that's a fireable offense.
And shortly, I will be coming back, maybe about, I'm going to run a process to interview more applicants for part-timers, I'm going to come back and present someone, but that won't be for a little bit, I got to post it, interview, and then I'll go from there, so, all right?
All right, so you're on the list for appointments, so I'll entertain said motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Stay safe out there, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You mean for anything else?
You have some money?
No, I mean...
Thank you, gentlemen, stay safe.
Okay.
This one, I don't think we, I don't think we need a one-year appointment, but it is obviously still standing, they are working.
What is that?
The Memorial Project?
It's the Building Committee, Police Station Building Committee?
Yes, I spoke with Holly, and she said that she wants, she wanted them to be reappointed because they have some bills in some...
Oh yeah, makes sense.
...for year seventeen, so she asked if they be reappointed.
So do we want to do a one-year appointment?
Sure.
Yeah.
So entertain said motion for Mr. Simpson, Mr. Eaton?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Holm, Ms. Washburn is not on it anymore, is she?
Well, I called and asked about that, they said technically she is to one, even though she doesn't come to any meetings.
Ms. Washburn, Mr. LaPierre, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Martel.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
One year, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Quaybog Valley Community Development, one year, Mr. Snyder?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, I'll do it again.
You want to do it, I didn't want you to do it.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recommission for three years, Mr. Clark and Ms. Hanerin?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Registers Board of, with town clerk, three-year, Ms. Sanborn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, pu pu pu, is this one-year Karen, sexual harassment officer?
Yes, one-year.
One-year for sexual harassment officer, Ms. Bradley?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Three-year appointment for Source Water Protection Committee, Ms. O'Connell, Mr. Taft, Mr. O'Leary, Ms. Grabowski, Mr. Clark?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Veterans Agent for three years, Mr. Griffin?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Um, pu 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 pu, this next one, I'm part of it, I'm not an alternate, you know, I'm a, I'm a full member.
I'm sorry.
So I'm going to move that, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint for a five-year term, Ms. Forcia White and Mr. Comptoir, for the zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Well, we, I was an alternate at first, and then I went to full. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town Council, one year, Ms. Copeland Page?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's it. Yes, ma'am.
I couldn't help but notice that of all the appointments made today, there was one person who was not appointed, and that was Beth Coughlin of the Advisory Committee.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to know why she was not given a second by either you, Ms. Lincoln, or you, Mr. Holcraft. The specific reason, since as I've observed, she's been an essential part of that committee, especially when it comes to member crunching and analysis.
Well, I've had numerous complaints from people, like the financial team, she's gone over their head, she has called the Department of Revenue without authorization, and then she has also called representatives from Vadar, which is the financial software that the financial team uses. And she just, and I think she's been spoken to, and she's done it again, so I mean, that's my reason, she just...
I haven't heard anything mentioned in any meeting about this, have you talked to Ms. Coughlin about these alleged allegations?
Well, I think that's up to the Chairman of the Board of the Advisory Board.
I think we're going into allegations and whatnot, it is confirmed, it has been discussed publicly.
It has been discussed.
For someone that, that runs on policies and procedures, in my mind, she's violated them consistently. I've had to put far too many fires out, and I'm just, I'm done with it.
Okay, go ahead and get it on the record.
Thank you, ma'am. Wage authorizations, item number seven. This might take longer than appointments. Yes, ma'am. Thanks for adding to our list.
What, what does...
Have you guys reviewed it?
No, we haven't. Is he new?
He is working, like I said.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, young guy, summertime, summer.
Tech dollars casual labor.
Can we entertain it the next meeting, or does it have to be tonight?
Does he need it tonight?
He's telling he needs it tonight.
I don't feel comfortable without you guys looking at it.
There's two of us here, I don't know.
What, you haven't looked at it?
Ah, I mean, if he's casual labor, if he's working, I mean, he needs to be paid, I mean, I don't have any problem with signing it, if Mary Lou wants to.
Well, you don't need to sign, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend you guys sign it without a vote from your...
Oh, all right. But he has to be paid, though, I mean, if you were to...
He is working, he needs to be paid.
So he's a new employee?
Yep.
So the COLA doesn't, the COLA doesn't affect him?
High school kid.
No, oh, he's a high school kid.
All right, so I'll entertain it, thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, I missed it, I didn't want to...
So in order to do this in an expedient way, and they're all signed by the Personnel Board, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the wage authorizations for the emergency squad.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And we can sign these later, it doesn't have to be done until the end of the year, so, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
See if we can do anything else expedient, just seeing.
I did argue about getting a stamp. Oh, well. Time flies.
Carpal tunnel kicking in?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the wage authorizations for the Fire Department.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the wage authorizations for the Highway Department.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the wage authorizations for the Library.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the wage authorization for the Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve the wage authorization for the Interim Accountant?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve the payroll, the wage authorization for the Administrative Assistant Clerk?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. A tree order now. This should have gone under Highway Department, but entertain a motion...
Well, the, well, the highway this morning, when we signed it, Cindy said that, that Herb said that it should be the Board of Selectmen because we hired him.
Well, it's, it's still under the department, I, I don't agree that the Board of Selectmen is, is, I would cross that out.
Well, they told me to put selectmen.
My only issue with this is that, for a seasonal worker, I don't think we give a three percent raise to that line. He hasn't even been here for a couple weeks. What's your take on it? We started at twelve.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree, but, again, I would turn to the personnel for sure, but, but yeah, we hired a couple weeks ago based on a certain rate, and that's what it should be.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
So entertain a motion for twelve dollars?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We already have this in here, don't we, Karen?
Is that one of them, it's for the financial clerk?
No, that's for the clerk.
It's for the clerk, but you have to put down the department head, it's official, it's the...
No, it's already in here.
Wait, I did the clerk already, I thought it was...
Oh, you did the clerk, the that one, okay.
No, I didn't, so entertain a motion to approve the wage authorization for the Accountant's Clerk?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this is the same thing, that, that new transfer station worker's not getting the three percent raise either, so I'll entertain a motion for the transfer casual labor.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Other, the Fire Department expense budget has ninety-seven dollars and ninety-six cents remaining, the bill's in hand, it'll be short four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifteen cents, there'll be a bill for plumbing services coming, and there may be another bill for such as utilities, as well as incidentals, be requesting two thousand dollars from the reserve fund, this should cover the end of fiscal, of, end of fiscal, but will mean postponing some planned expenses, so until we see something coming across, I guess this is just an FYI. Any other other?
Nope.
No, I did talk to Mike about the beach and the testing starting July one.
Okay.
I talked to him today as well, he's, he's on top of it. Correspondence, a very nice thank you letter, I am horrible with penmanship, can you read that, is it Mulligan?
Yes.
Mulligan?
Sean and Margaret Mulligan.
Mulligan, um...
They live home, yeah.
Praising highly the Fire Department for a fire at their home on May ninth. I, I would, I would destroy the intent of this letter by trying to read it, I'd be stumbling over words because it's, it's in penmanship, and the biggest words that I see is professionalism and saving items in the house, so kudos to, to our men and women that serve this community, it's nice to be recognized.
Yes.
Karen just included this, I haven't seen it yet, so bear with me. From Mr. Landine, Chairman of the Brookfield Recreation, I really don't want to do this, I, I don't want to do it, so you can do it, I didn't do it for that, but thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So you can read it, Lynn, if you'd like.
Okay. The Brookfield Recreation would like to thank Stephen Comptoir and Chris Malinowski for volunteering countless hours to repair and rebuild our softball field dugout. The structure has fallen into disrepair and had begun to crumble. Thanks to the hard work of these two gentlemen, we will have a safe place for our teams to sit while playing softball for years to come. We would also like to thank Ahearn Equipment for the generous donation of the use of the excavator to dig out the foundation. Come, Camos?
Camasi.
Camasi Masonry Supply for the donation of the block and the Highway Department for the assist to removing the roof, allowing us to reuse it at a huge cost savings. Thanks again, Jeff Landine, Chairman of the Brookfield Recreation Committee.
It's very nice for that appreciation, but now that it's out there, a lot of work went into that, and, you know, Camasi Masonry, Charlton and Auburn, so for all those that are out there, understand, the only reason why I'm entertaining this discussion right now that I'm having is this is what people in Brookfield and other towns need to solicit, you know, Camasi donated all the block to that building, well, to that structure, Ahearn donated, we thought there was a major foundation issue, we weren't going to dig it by hand to prove it, so they donated a mini excavator, extremely nice of them.
Mm-hmm.
The Highway Department, Donnie came down and, and took the roof off after we disengaged it, and took it off in about ten minutes, and saved the town a lot of money for that roof, and we're going to put it hopefully back on tomorrow, and I'm going to tell you what, guys, with, obviously, I, I helped out a lot, we, hopefully, we're going to finish it tomorrow, we've got about four days into it, but Christopher Malinowski, owning his own construction company, taking time out, he's, he's not involved really much in this town, but for him to do something like that, he's, he's a construction guy, anybody that needs any work done, Mr. Malinowski's your guy to, to do it too, so I'd like to thank all those entities.
I'd like to thank them all, totally, appreciate everything that everybody does for the town.
One hundred percent, it's, it's all volunteer, so...
Yeah, it's all volunteer.
It's awesome. Any other issues this evening? I will entertain a motion to enter Executive Session Number Three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, with the intent to enter back into regular session for the sole purpose of endurance.
I'll make that motion.
No, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.